We'll call meeting to order. I apologize for my tardiness. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Kelly is absent. Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Perkins?
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Here.
Councilmember Granneal?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Here.
Mayor Miller?
Here. Okay, number two, consideration and discussion regarding code compliance efforts and challenge within the town over the last year direction from council. Moving forward, Mr. Cook.
Um, I've asked the building official code compliance manager as well as a code and code compliance officer to make the presentation.
Okay. Have you got a clicker? How many slides you got?
I think they have about forty.
Give or take.
Mm-hmm. Can I see your mouse, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we have, at the request of council, some, some members of council, we put together a short presentation. Not very many slides, Mayor.
Good.
Um, to go over some of the, the recent and current, um, code activity as well as, um, some of the processes. So I've asked David Heimy to actually do the nuts and bolts of it since he's got the hands on day to day, um, working with all this. So come on up, Dave.
Thank you, Dan. As Dan said, my name is David Heimy. I'm the code enforcement officer for the town of Chino Valley. And, uh, we hope you enjoy this presentation. So here's a sort of breakdown of what we've been doing fiscal year twenty twenty till now. We have about two hundred and one complaints. And all those complaints, a hundred and sixty of them are residential, forty-one are commercial. As a result of those complaints, we had two hundred and twenty-one cases. About seven hundred phone calls. It's, it's kind of hard to get an, an exact number of the phone calls where, you know, some, some complainants like to be notified about everything, some don't. So that's just a rough estimate of, uh, how many there was. Our current efforts, we have planned and put together a town cleanup, which is scheduled for May seventh and eighth. We had, uh, Matt Santos helped us out with some advertising. He created some flyers for us. He's, uh, posted on social media, our website. Uh, with those flyers, we were able to mail out a bunch to, to some neighborhoods. Um, and with that, we have kind of been combing the neighborhoods, going through different parts of town and, 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 uh, created some cases. As we're doing that, we're also mailing out flyers to, to let people know. And as they call in in response to our, our cases, we're, we're letting them know, hey, you know, you can bring your stuff to the town cleanup, bring it for free, we'll, we'll get rid of it for you. Um, along with that, we have a concentrated effort to bring commercial corridor into compliance. And this is something that comes up, you know, every now and then. But, uh, what I'm doing is just, I'm starting on one side of town and just kind of going up and down and, and seeing what's going on, looking for, for different things and, and opening cases and, and, uh, trying to get things cleaned up. So far, I have about twelve going. I've closed a couple, so I've gotten some compliance so far out of it. And when I say going, you know, up and down, looking at stuff, I'm looking at, at sort of everything. I'm looking at storage. I'm looking at, you know, weeds, of course. I'm looking at screening. I'm looking at all, you know, different things, making sure, you know, um, people are complying with, with, with our codes. When it comes to commercial, you know, I mentioned the complaints beforehand. A lot of the complaints, they're, they're not, they're not so much related to code. Believe it or not, I get complaints about, well, this person was rude to me when I, when I came into, you know, do business with them and this and that. Well, I'm sorry, there's nothing I can do about that. So that's kind of how that's going. Now, I thought I explained the process of how we do things. And I, I put up here, you know, how we deal with complaints. There's, there's numerous ways that, you know, a citizen can file a complaint. Anything from picking up the phone and giving us a call to coming in and filling out a form. It can go online and email. There is a, a section in our, our, uh, website that has a portal that goes directly to our software that, that you can file a complaint. And of course, these complaints can be anonymous. You can leave your name however you want to do it. So once we get a complaint, um, we have three days to respond to that complaint. So once I get it, I'll, I'll, you know, add it to the caseload. I'll go out to the property that's being complained about and do an inspection. Now with that complaint, you know, I, it's usually a specific concern that a citizen has. So I'll take that into, into consideration when I go there. But I'm also, you know, trying to, to look at everything else about the property, just to make sure there isn't, you know, anything else going on. So as a result of that inspection, if, if I find that, you know, there, there's a violation, I'll go ahead and open a case up. Sometimes I don't, you know, sometimes there's not. Sometimes it's just one, you know, that has an issue with the person or, or whatever reason. So, you know, there will be no reason really to open a case, so I won't. Um, a lot of these complaints that I've noticed lately especially have been, you know, a lot of, uh, trash is going on and people have inoperable vehicles. Uh, right up there with, uh, with those, with the most amount of complaints, I get a lot of, um, people living in RVs. And I think that, you know, has a direct result of, of, uh, the situation our, our entire country's in really with, with the COVID nineteen pandemic. There's been a lot of, you know, I get a lot of that when I go out. And, uh, you know, so I, I hear different things about that. So, you know, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at trash. I'm looking at cars. I'm looking at weeds and stuff. But weeds haven't been an issue so far. You know, we're coming into our, our spring, summer season. So that's gonna, that's gonna get a lot more. So anyway, um, after I open the case, uh, we have a, a procedure where you are, uh, you're notified with, with, uh, with a letter. It's a violation notice. It gives you fifteen days to, to comply. Tells you, you know, what your, uh, what your violation is. And I also like to add in, you know, uh, ways you can fix that violation, a little quip, quick little suggestion on how you can come into compliance. And then always on our letters towards the end, we always have, you know, please contact me, please, you know, if you're having any kind of issues, I'm willing to work with you. But you have to reach out to me and, and let me know. So after that first letter goes, um, I go back out at a scheduled fifteen days later and I have another look. If, uh, if everything's been taken care of, if everything's good, I document that and I go ahead and close the case out. If there are still some issues, if they haven't done anything, I send out a second notice letter. And that right there gives you another fifteen days to, uh, to come into compliance. At the end of that one, there's, there's a third inspection. I go out. And this is kind of where, where, uh, where it can either end or it can just keep going. We have, uh, if, if you don't come into compliance on that second notice, I issue a citation. It's a civil citation through the court. And then it requires you to come in and respond to that. Um, so potentially with the citation involved, the case could go as far as, as forty day, forty-five days, something like that. And we, we always try, you know, my goal or our goal is, is compliance. We're not trying to, to get you into court. We're not trying to prosecute anybody. We're not trying to do stuff like that. So that's the reason why we give, you know, a couple notices because we, we want to work with these people. We want to help, you know, whoever needs help and what, whatever we can do. So I thought I'd talk a little bit about a couple of the prosecution challenges that we're having. As I mentioned before, COVID nineteen has been, has been kind of interesting to deal with. Um, right off the bat, as you know, our offices closed and that included the courthouse. You know, there was several cases I had in, um, in civil citation mode that just got canceled. They got pushed. They got rescheduled and it was, it was interesting. What I mean by, uh, streamline the civil citation, there's, you know, there, there's a code in there. It, it's a habitual offender. And I, I think that, you know, it would be helpful to kind of take a look at the language on that. There is, uh, the habitual offender is, is basically when someone offends, you know, over and over again, whether it's the same violation or another violation. After, after a couple of citations, two or more, within a certain amount of time, you can, you can go into a criminal process. The problem with that, and that usually gets people's attention. You know, nobody wants to deal with that kind of stuff. The problem with that is you have to have two complete citations. And what I mean by complete is you're issued a citation, you either, you go to court, you either pay the fine, you say that, you know, I'm not guilty, or you ignore it. As a result of either of those three decisions, that citation becomes complete. Now, there's people out there that, you know, they'll, they'll be issued a violation citation. And before the life of that citation is up, they come into compliance. And that's great and that's fine. But then again, they just reoffend again. And then the whole thing starts all over again. So once, once they come into compliance by code, I'm required to dismiss the citation, which kind of, you know, takes that out of the whole scenario. So I'm basically starting over. So I'm just looking at a way of, of just, you know, and, and this is not everybody. This is people that continuously either ignore me or just continue to offend. I'm looking at a way to kind of tighten the grip on that. Kind of get a little more teeth, if you will, to, to kind of help fix that problem. The communication part, you know, I, I, I communicate with them all the time, you know, I'm, I'm, especially when I have citations or cases going with the court. Constantly calling and, and looking at, you know, asking for updates, stuff like that. So what I want to do is I just, I'd, I'd like to go in and, and speak with them and just talk about a way that we can come up together with a way that, you know, I can be notified by them when something changes or something happens. Because right now, I'm kind of just chasing after it. Excuse me. So that's kind of what I like to work on. When it comes to division needs, you know, continuing education and training, that's, that's a given on, on pretty much everything. We, we like to, to keep educated and new things are always changing. Um, COVID has made that kind of an issue. Um, once that came into effect, everything was just put on hold. There was no classes being offered, nothing really going on. So that's, that's starting to ease up a little bit. So we're, we're starting to get more classes, online classes, stuff like that. So that's something we're going to take advantage of. Um, changes to the code. I feel like there's, there's some, again, some language that involve, you know, non-household pets, horses, cows, stuff like that. I think it's, it could be a little more clear when, when we're talking about, you know, what you're allowed to have and what zones, stuff like that. Outside storage, RVs, that's, that's something we're always dealing with. And I just think it could be tweaked a little bit to, to kind of help that out. Now, we're using, we use the software to manage my cases as well as, you know, development services. They use it as well for business licensing, um, building department, planning and zoning and stuff like that. And I can't really speak on, you know, how they use it. But when it comes to code enforcement, there's just some, some issues that, that I think could be, you know, we could, we could work on or, or have changed. There's some stuff with, with, uh, like on my, on my cases, you know, the, the way I have to look them up is, it's just kind of clunky. The way I make letters, it's, it's hard to edit stuff and just different things that are, that are currently happening with that. So after some, um, some discussion, you know, our, uh, our current directors have been talking about it as well. And everybody's kind of getting together and talking about it and trying to find something that, that'll be a lot easier to use. So hopefully that, that'll, you know, help out. Now, I went ahead and, uh, included some slides here. I just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, how this works. And I picked these two cases in particular because these are examples of times where, you know, I've, I've really tried to work with the, the people involved here. I know it's kind of hard to see. They're pretty small. But those, those first two right there, that, I mean, that, that property was, was really a mess. There was multiple issues going on. So after I made contact, you know, they, I was able to get ahold of someone and they were, you know, interested. They, they were wanting to do this. They just, it didn't fit. The timeframe of our, of our process didn't really fit the way that they could do it. So I really, you know, I did my best to try to work with them with time. I provided a couple of resources for them to, to help them out a little bit. And it, it took a little longer than, you know, maybe it should have. But as you can see, we got some compliance out of it. So that was great. The second one, same thing. There was a, a gentleman who was wanting to get this trailer off his property. He was having some issues. I just kind of, you know, okay, well, I can, I can give you this much time. You know, just let me know what you want to do. And eventually was able to, to, uh, to take care of it. Um, I guess I just would really be curious to know, you know, as far as council's concerned, what kind of, what kind of area you, you, if you guys have any issues or anything that you'd like, you know, code enforcement to, to focus on, that'd be great. Just some feedback. If not, we're always going to be, you know, out there looking for stuff. Um, recently, in the past few years, you know, I've, I've, I've been alone. I've had, you know, help here and there. I've had a couple of, uh, employees who came in. One of them was temporary. The other one was kind of tasked other duties. So, um, just recently, we actually hired a full-time, another full-time, uh, enforcement officer, which has been very helpful. Especially now that we're trying to put this, uh, we're in the process of putting the, the, uh, cleanup together. It was very helpful having, you know, another person to be able to go out there and just, you know, start, you know, proactively just doing stuff. So as, as he, you know, gets more training and, and we get going, it's, it's, it's going to be a good thing. I, I think we'll see, you know, a lot more compliance coming around. So that's, that's kind of pretty much all I had right there. So.
Could you do me a favor?
Sure. What's that? Take off?
Click off of the slide, please. Thank you. That's for the viewers at home.
Oh. Got you. I've got a couple of things here that I made notes on.
Sure.
With, it, because I can just see how busy it can get with you. What? How, how are, how do you do on a daily basis of returning people's phone calls?
Okay, so let's say Monday morning, you know, I have, I have a caseload that, previously opened cases that I have scheduled, you know, throughout the week that I need to either re-inspect or inspect for the first time. Um, if it's a complaint issue, someone submits a complaint to me. If they provide me with, with a name and number, I can always call them back. A lot of times, people don't want to do that. They want to be anonymous. They don't want to, you know, in that case, I have really no way of communicating.
Right.
Um, if I, if they do provide me something, I'll go through my, my caseload for the day and see what updates need to be communicated with whoever, you know, I'm dealing with. So I'll give them a call, you know, let them know what's going on, and we'll just go from there.
But you're usually able to keep up. You don't?
Yeah, it can, it can be tight at times. You know, there, there are times where, you know, I have to put it off for a day because I got other things going and things pop up during the day. But I, I try to be very, you know, I try to document everything and keep, you know, okay, I wasn't able to call this guy today. I'll give him a call back tomorrow.
Right.
Or there's always the, the issue where I do call someone and there's no voicemail or they didn't even, not even knowing that I called. So I'll make a note of that and I'll try again later the next day.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, there are times where it can be overwhelming, but for the most part, it's, I'm able to stay on top of it. So.
So on the habitual offender, what, am I right? What you're thinking is that when that case, if they comply, you say it's dismissed?
Right.
Somehow you would like to keep a record of that?
Yeah, yeah. Um, so.
And that makes sense?
Just a kind of a generic example is, you know, I'll have, you know, we'll pick a commercial property. I'll have a commercial property along the highway that, you know, everybody sees when they drive by. It'll be filled with weeds. It'll be a vacant property, let's say. It'll be filled with weeds and, and, you know, so I'll send a notice. They'll wait, they'll wait, they'll wait until they comes to a citation process, you know, the citation part of it. And then they'll run out and they'll, they'll clean it up. Well, there are certain times of year where, you know, fine, you mowed it, great, it looks great. But then in a few weeks, a month, it's going to be overgrown again. And so I've dismissed that citation. When it happens again, I got to start all over again, start the whole process over again. And, and that first citation, it doesn't really count, you know, it doesn't really matter. It's gone. So it's like starting from scratch again. So they're, I'm doing it again. And then it comes to citation. They finally come into compliance. Maybe one more time in the season, it'll grow back. You know, it, it's kind of, if I could find a way to where I can make the first one count and that second one count and use it to kind of be a little more heavy on them, that'd be great. You know, but the way it is right now, we can't do that.
Okay. Well, and that, again, that makes sense to me. You know, why waste his time where he's got to start all over every time, um, if somebody's doing that? The notification from the court, that I would think should be something fairly easy that they would.
Right.
When, when they find something out, either they settle something or somebody doesn't show, or whatever it is that they would be able to notify you and.
And I haven't really approached them. I just want to get everything together before I do. But, you know, I'm constantly calling. So I don't know why, you know, maybe something, you know, like he's always calling. Maybe we should have, you know, I don't, I don't know what's going on. But I, I'm planning on working, putting something together and, and approaching them with that. And I'm sure it won't be an issue. They're, they're great to work with. You know, I have no problems, you know, with the clerks. They're, they're awesome actually. So I don't see why.
Well, and I was just talking about a way that we do business as a town.
Right.
You know, that that could just be an automatic thing that, uh, that happens here again, saving you time.
Yes.
So, um, and then the, the last one was the household pets, RV storage. With our RV storage, what does a person have to do, um, if they've got a forty-foot motorhome parked next to their house?
Right.
Is there something wrong with that?
No, no, absolutely not. You can store, you know, RVs, campers, boats, trailers, anything like that on your property.
So where does the problem arise?
The problem comes in when, when they make these items habitable.
Okay.
And we have a list of, of conditions that, you know, I think there's nine or ten of them. You only need three of those to make it habitable. And, you know, out here in rural area, people, people don't really think about that. They, they bring in an RV and they got a spot for it. Let's plug it in. Let's put some water in there. Let's, you know, let's make it another space. So.
Yeah.
That's, that's kind of the issue there.
Okay. That's all I had.
I guess I'm not, I'm not clear on something as far as, what level of violation, where does, um, for instance, I know from personal experience, when I bought my first truck, I parked it at my house.
Right.
Well.
You're talking about a commercial vehicle?
Huh?
A commercial?
Commercial vehicle. And I got warned and then I got cited. So I went and seen the judge. And so it says, here's your fine, you know, move it. Well, I ignored that. I got another warning and another trip to the judge. The judge at that point said, you know, this is twice. The third time, I can actually give you jail time. Well, I moved the truck. The, but that went into the, well, that went into the legal system. So that, but is everything that is in code violation not be necessarily a legal thing?
Um, it starts out, no. Yeah.
Okay, that, that's, civil versus criminal, is that, explain that a little bit.
Okay, so. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you though.
So, let me see how I can explain that. So basically, yeah, everything is considered civil. You're given, you know, basically a thirty-day warning to come into compliance for something. And we just kind of break that up into two fifteen-day warnings. So once you go beyond that point, you are issued a civil citation, which is very similar or pretty much comparable to a traffic ticket. The only way it can become criminal is, is through the habitual offender code. And it has to, uh, Arizona courts require a thirty-day notice. I believe that to, once you're given a citation, you're given thirty days to, to, uh, appear, I guess you could say for an arraignment, you're given thirty days to be notified. And then you're either going, you got three options. You can ignore it. You can come in and say, you know what? No, I'm, I'm not guilty. I didn't do that. Or you can pay the fine and admit guilt, you know, go ahead and pay the fine right there. It's, it, once you have a couple of those, then it can become, you know, a criminal matter where you can face higher fines, jail time, stuff like that. Or prior to that point, it's, it's all civil and it's just punishable by fine or, you know. Yeah.
So do we have, do you have a, a set procedure to, for that? Are you?
As far as, yeah.
Okay, you know, it, it was cut and dry. I was two times and then.
Right.
You know.
Yeah.
Um, so again, it, I would almost think on the second time, you have to get told about your weeds. You know, on the third time, you're actually getting a, a criminal.
Okay.
Uh, but using your example, you went before the judge two separate times. These people are going out before they even get to the judge. They're mowing and coming into compliance, which means he's dismissing the case.
Yes.
And then he's starting over.
You know, I'm saying you get warned the first time about your weeds. You get it, you know, mowed down. The second time, we have to come back in about your weeds again. Now you don't get a warning this time. You actually get, you know, uh, you know.
A citation.
A citation.
But it's coming into compliance.
Step it up.
Otherwise, you would have moved your truck at the beginning with that second citation.
Exactly.
Right. So they're coming into compliance.
Well, I moved my truck. I moved it to the backyard. So, but yeah, so they got my attention in a matter of three steps. And it wasn't just a matter of, well, I'll park it here today. Oh, well, now I parked over here. They're just playing the game, you know?
Right. But they, yeah, they're, they're never going to the court like you did. You followed the whole process. They're getting around that process.
They're getting right up to the point.
Right up to it.
Yes.
Coming into compliance and then just doing it again later because they never had to see the judge.
Why are you saying, oh, they do it again though? Is that, that would?
That would require a code change.
Yes.
That's what he wants to get to.
And you start again at zero.
There's no succession of, he's done it once, you, you dismissed it. Basically, he's done it again.
Yeah.
It's done.
It goes away. Yeah.
You can do it ten times.
I mean, the record's there, but you can't use it.
He can do it ten or fifteen times.
Yep.
Yeah. It could go on forever.
Yeah.
Because we don't have a habitual offender thing there. They would like to work on that and get, you know, your ideas or hear from you guys if you all thought that was good.
Yeah, the habitual offender language specifically says they have to go through the entire process. And plead guilty, be charged with a fine, and the case goes through the entire process.
Okay, so I guess the question is how serious are we as a council, whether we want to change that language? So that we can help avoid the habitual.
You know, I will also say that, that, um, let's say, you know, the, the language on the habitual offender is tightened up and we can, you know, go criminally after some people. Now, when it gets to that point in the court, the court doesn't automatically say, or the judge doesn't automatically say, hey, boom, you're guilty. You're going to jail. You're paying this fine. The, the times that I have actually gotten it into the criminal area, they're, they're more than willing, as well as I am, to get them to, you know, come into compliance. But they now have been through the process and they know what can happen if they don't. You know, they, they're given some more time to, to actually fix it without facing the, the huge fine or the jail time or anything like that. But the, 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 the times that I have gone through it, it has been very effective, even with that last chance that, that they've got. They, they go, they clean up. And I notice after that, I'm driving by their house and it's, it's, it's nice. It's good. We just, you know, we get a way to get it there a little easier, faster.
Do you see that more on commercial than residential?
What's that?
Is it more on, on the empty commercial buildings?
No, it's, it's more, it's more residential. Yeah, as far as that goes.
Uh, next question. Property use versus, is, is property use something that code enforcement would monitor? Or is that a separate?
Are you asking in relation to zoning?
Could be.
Uh, right.
Okay, yes. Yeah, let, let's, let's go with that. Let's go with a zoning violation versus a weeds.
Yeah, they should be looking at zoning violations as well with regards to use.
To our code enforcement. I know we pointed out when you and I drove around that some properties that were used as, uh, uh, impound yards.
So an industrial type use along yet on a commercial type property? Yeah, that would be a violation of zoning.
So code enforcement, that would be, you know, part of their view. Okay. So commercial properties not maintaining what their original requirements were. That you, before you get your, you know, certificate of occupancy, you need to have X, Y, and Z done. You get it and a year later, it's not being maintained.
Yes, that would extend to landscaping, lighting, the parking lot maintenance, everything else. The issue that we run in there is that prior to me arriving, um, being able to find past landscape plans or lighting plans or, uh, site plans, um, was like hitting a dartboard in the dark. It, the, the chances of there being one was, was minimal at best.
Okay. Um, but even the ones that you know that were, were approved since this code was enacted, they would. Okay, how do we correct it?
Um, I've started correcting that by keeping all, uh, site plans, landscape plans, and lighting plans. I have signed the final draft of each of those. And they are kept in the property file, the parcel file, uh, for that. And they are kept in the property file, the parcel file uh for that development. So going forward, we'll be able to track that. So any development that's occurred within the last two years. Uh, David can look and if there appears to be dead landscaping, he can come in, he can look at the approved uh landscape plan. And we can notify them that they need to replace their dead landscaping. Uh, our landscape code uh has a requirement in there. That they are required to maintain uh existing landscaping and replace dead landscaping, so.
And that's forever?
Um, now until whenever, yeah.
Okay, so I think, so where you're going is, let's say before Josh, and there aren't those records, we still had a basic code.
Uh, yeah, that's great.
Was required. So if you go by and there's a couple shriveled up dead things sitting out front. We still should be able to require them to put something in there, even if you can't get a picture of what was supposed to be there to begin with. I I think that's where Cory's going.
Yeah.
I can understand, I I understand that. I'd I'd like to actually talk to legal counsel about if I'm able to do that. Or because we didn't require the site plan or the landscape plan, if those uses are somehow grandfathered in in their current state. Um, I I don't have an answer for that tonight.
Okay, no, that's just, it's just an idea, I think, that came up, so.
Yeah, okay, great.
Code enforcement primarily, David, you're doing a a complaint driven process?
Um, in the past, yes, with uh, by myself. It was not completely complaint driven. Now that, you know, the times that I've had help and now that I have a more permanent help, yeah, we're trying to get to the point where we can do a lot more. Uh proactive stuff.
They do a good job, though.
And this is something that when when I did get ahold of Josh and we did the drive around and um. That I told him is, and that's part of what, how this meeting was created tonight. That if we need to, if the council wants the town cleaned up this way. If he needs more help, he needs to come to us and say, hey, you know, what are you guys willing to, you know, pay for? If we want more enforcement, well, one man can only do so much. So, um, is this something we need to approve within their budget, their request? You know, because again, one man can only do so many, well, forty hours a week and that's it. And if we need a hundred and twenty hours a week worth of, you know, well, then that's up to us. But we can't hold their feet to the fire on doing their job, you know, when you got a hundred and twenty hours of work to do and. A forty hour a week personnel.
Yeah, that's something I wrote down here was uh, you ask us what we wanted you to do or what our needs were of you. And I think it's more important that you tell us what your needs are of us.
I get that.
Then, because we have no idea what you're doing day in, day out.
Right. Um, off the top of my head, I would just ask for your continued support. I know you always support us, so like, as long as that keeps going.
Well, I mean, you mentioned uh computer programs, you mentioned changing the, changing whatever you need to, I mean. Like I said, we don't know this stuff. So you you just need to come to us and say, this is what we need to do and justify it and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Actually, and you just said something that I. We don't need to reinvent the wheel every time.
Amen to that.
And create, start from zero. Uh, Prescott Valley, I know, went through the the same thing a number of years ago. And it made a lot of people angry, but you know, it's it's Prescott Valley is much cleaner than it used to be. It it was really. But again, the the core of Prescott Valley was kind of like Chino Valley. It had been there for decades. And then they they had to step it up. So I don't know what they use for software or uh what their code is. Whether it's something that would help us without, you know, again, having to start from zero.
Okay, I've asked uh David and Will to do some research on other communities, and I think they've started with Prescott, Prescott Valley, Cottonwood. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Clarkdale, Flagstaff, and I I thought there was one other. Oh, Sedona, Camp Verde.
Just surrounding areas and some areas that are, you know, equal in size, if you will, throughout Arizona.
Yeah, I think within the tri-city, as we we become closer and closer to one city. That I I would think trying to to blend with Prescott and Prescott Valley would probably be. Sedona, we have nothing in common.
It's okay, as long as you don't move the rocks.
We can cross them out if you want.
Can can we talk about non-household pets and why they're an issue or how they're an issue?
I think that, you know, people are are uh confused, curious about, you know, what they can and can't have. You know, we have different zonings, you know, in in our in our town. Some zones, you can have certain things, other zones, you you can't have anything. So it becomes, you know, an issue with just them having no knowledge of what's going on.
Um, the specific language in our code says uh one horse, cattle, pig, one per acre. Or sheep, goats, fowl. So what that tells me is you can either have a horse, a cow, or a pig, one per acre. But you can have as many sheep, goats, and fowl as you want. So. Clarifying how many animals per acre you, the council, want. If you want to remove that restriction, if you want to clarify it, make it clear, that's kind of where the confusion comes in. Because when you go out to some of these properties that are five acres in size, they have a lot more than five animals. Five of those three type of animals. Whether it's horse, cattle, whatever.
Is there a problem? Are we?
Well, the code says one thing, but there's a lot of people in the town that have more than that. So do we start citing everybody that has more than that, or do we fix the code to accommodate the town? That's the question.
I think, I think he means is there a public, public complaint driving this issue?
I get a lot of people who don't have these kind of animals, don't want them, and they're complaining about, well, so and so down here has all this. And it's driving me crazy and that that comes up.
Are they compliant though?
What's that?
Are they, are they in compliance?
Some yes, some no.
I would think that. I guess what I would like to see, unless we change the code, but you you're never going to get it perfect for everybody.
Right.
But uh, still, I think we could come up with something reasonable. Who's the horse people here? What's realistic to, on one acre of property? How how many, how many horses can you have on one acre piece of property? Keep them clean. Keep the stalls clean and stuff so they're not bothering your neighbor in August.
I think that depends on the person. You know, you you know, it could be, you could have fifty horses on a pe- an acre and not see a turd on the ground. Oh, I said turd, sorry.
That's a lot of work.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you better hire some help, buddy.
I I just meant, you know what I mean, people that take care of their property.
And there's factors in that, too, if they're grazing or if they're in stalls. So I would say on one acre, a mixture between turnout and stalls, I would think four would be. Suitable, more than suitable.
So you could go with something then, like four, allow four per acre?
That's something I could support.
But then, along with that, they must keep it clean.
Yeah.
I mean, I I think that's really important, I've.
And some people, you know, I don't know how big their prop- their houses are or their detached structures. So they might have an acre but only have a tiny space. I don't think that's appropriate either. I don't think there's a one size fits all for this situation. But I do think there should be some clarification between.
That might be something to compare what cities, what what, what other towns would be comparable to Chino Valley. To possibly see how it's working in in Chandler or Wickenburg or, you know.
And and in my opinion, horses are different than cattle and pigs.
Mm-hmm.
So I, you know.
I agree.
Why would a person have, you know, more than one steer on an acre of ground? They're having to feed that thing and they're doing it for one reason.
It tastes good.
Yeah, and and uh and. And I wouldn't wanna, I would, I don't think I'd wanna live next door, especially on the north side of somebody that had four pigs, so.
Right.
On an acre of ground.
Longley, when you guys had the the arena down there, how many stalls were down there?
Well, that was a ten acre piece of property, I think, and I think there were. I think there were maybe between sixteen and sixteen and twenty.
And that's, I mean, it's still clean today. I mean, yeah.
Oh, but but we had a full-time person that went out every morning and cleaned the stalls.
That was my point, you know, they.
It was a commercial, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
I choose horse work over housework any day. It is, it is a lot of work, though, and you're right, the cows are very different than horses.
And I think what Cory said was agreement with, let's find out what other places are doing comparable, maybe Buckeye or Buckeye's pretty big now, but.
What is a comparable place that we could use?
And let's see what they go and then see if that fits. There's gotta be verbiage because they have the same thing, no matter what town you have, you have.
Mm-hmm.
People that clean up after their animals and people that don't.
So to back up just a little bit, do you have an idea what you may need for personnel? To, just from what you're gathering so far, are you, what are you hearing?
Well, I'm, I did put in a request, but there's a lot of people that put in requests, so I don't want to take away their chances of getting a person as well.
Well, they're gonna make a pitch just like you, so.
Well, I think an extra FTE for code code compliance would definitely help us um with uh being proactive along the commercial corridor. And would help us in the residential areas as well. Um, it can only help us uh improve the the way the town looks and. That's important.
That's kind of what I wanted to hear was um. Not spending more money on an employee, but if that's what you need, um, that's what you need. But proactive enforcement along the commercial corridor of eighty-nine, um, and then complaint driven on residential, that's what I would prefer. Um, as far as direction, that's just me and myself and I.
No, that that's good. I appreciate that.
Well, and and I've, I brought this up before and I don't know what our options are, but I'd really like to, I'd like to see us. Working with the, somehow get some kind of working relationship with the state. On our commercial corridor, because we've got, I mean, it is, it's in the rulebook, I will tell you. That if you open up an acre of commercial property and start using it, that you have to have asphalt over that fifty foot right away to get to your property. And I will tell you that there's at least, I'd say, there's a good percentage that don't have it. And I don't know why. Yeah, it's not our decision, but it seems like we should be able to notify ADOT. And say, these people put in an application to use this piece of property, will you come out and make sure they're in compliance?
The uh the asphalt on their property for the parking, that that's on us.
No, I'm talking about just getting like where where I'm at.
In the right of way?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, where I'm at is a good example of it, down there on the north end of town.
I just say, I think it's important that if we're gonna start enforcing, we have enough resources. Rules, code, whatever, so that we can do it across the board. Because as soon as we start enforcing, people are gonna go, well, what about them and what about them? Like I'm sure they do now with weeds and stuff, but um I just think that's very important to me.
Well, this has been good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Communication.
Anything else? So that, did I understand where more of your residential issues are more complaint driven? Where the commercial corridor, we're looking for more proactive.
Correct. That's that's how I I see the commercial corridor. That's how people know Chino Valley. So that I would like to be more proactive of people coming through. Um, and then uh complaint driven residential still.
Okay.
That's just my thoughts.
So speaking of code enforcement, um, a year and a half ago, we met on the uh signage. And there was, I'm just reminding, uh, within six months, we'll be bringing that back to you. As the sunset clause uh will have reached the two-year mark and we'll revisit the auxiliary signage then. Um, so if you want to kind of pay attention to the uh eighty-nine corridor with regard to the auxiliary signage and just start making notes and. Things like that now, so we can comment later, that'd be great.
Thank you for that reminder and heads up.
All right, anything else on um code compliance?
Ouch.
All right, item number three, consideration discussion of ordinance twenty twenty-one eight ninety-three regarding the proposed text amendment. To the town of Chino Valley Unified Development Ordinance, chapter one fifty-four. By amendment section two point one, meaning of meanings of words and terms in section four point nine. Outdoor storage by adding the proposed definition and regulations for metal storage containers.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and uh Council. This is the gift that keeps on giving. We are bringing it back to you again. Um, so uh we proposed this text amendment uh for a couple of reasons. The first is uh comics boxes or metal storage containers are not permitted in our code, they are not structures. We have no way of permitting them outright. Uh, the only way that we can permit them now is through a conditional use permit. Conditional use permit uh can take between eight and twelve weeks, depending on when they submit their application. And it can be up to, uh, it is uh based on our for- our fee schedule, four hundred dollars. So that's a large amount of money that somebody would pay the town to go through the process to not guarantee a comics box. Or some sort of metal storage container, uh, and it's uh fairly lengthy for wanting to put one on the property. So uh in essence, uh, in order to uh make it an allowed use, we need to change the code. So uh we've brought it to you uh multiple times, starting February twenty-six, twenty twenty. Uh, where we brought it to the EDO subcommittee, um, and then we took it to the EDO subcommittee in Oc- October. Uh, planning commission in December, um, brought it to you in February, and then a study session in February. And then we held another um meeting in March, and then uh here we are today. Some of the major changes that we made to the text from what the planning commission approved and what we went over. And what we discussed at study session to now, uh, we added the percentages uh of um. Of storage container uh based on a lot coverage or the total amount of area in the lot. Uh, it was one percent for residential, three percent for commercial and industrial, and then for those commercial. Uh, properties along SR eighty-nine, it was one and a half percent. Um, there was a discussion at the last study session to continue measuring um. For uh the metal storage containers to measure the setback based on the permanent structure setbacks, which is ten feet. In some areas as opposed to the five feet for accessory structures. Uh, we deleted the electrical service allowance uh because it's not a structure in order to take electricity to it. They would have to have that str- have it become a structure, meaning it would need to be engineered. Uh, and then we clarified that for all commercial and industrial properties, if they are making any external changes to their site. And adding one of these storage containers would change the external nature of their site, they would be required to go through uh the site plan review. Um, and then we added at the very end a sunset clause, um, and a timing for when that sun sets, where we could revisit it. And discuss if it's working, if we need to modify it, um, or or how we want to go forward. Uh, with that, um, I will open it up to questions and discussion, and if you don't mind, I'm gonna sit down so I can take some copious notes.
Copious. All right. This came up and it was asked to be tabled because some people had issues, and I think we should start with the issues. And see, see where we're at.
Um, before we begin, does anybody need a copy? I made extras.
We got them. They were in our packet.
Did you need a copy? I'm bringing.
Oh, I thought you needed.
Oh, no, that's okay. No, I got mine in my packet, too.
Okay.
Well, I think. So, well, I think uh I'd like to hear from Tom, because he was one of them that spoke up and said that, you know, are we, you know, a little, are we getting over with this, so I'd like to hear his ideas.
We're looking at a situation here that we went through before, we asked if there were any complaints, and it was none. You said you'd had two people come in wondering what they had to go through to do it. I just feel like we're over-regulating. I mean, no, I don't want them stacked on top of each other, and I don't want kids tricycles put on the top of Christmas lights around or something, but setbacks I don't care about, as far as painting them to match, that's a lot of money and a lot of time, some of these people aren't gonna be able to afford it, and that's the only way they can have outdoor storage. I think in a way we're just over-regulating electrical, I can see that, because they're not an engineered thing. But the guy came up to me and he says, well, if I need to do something in there at night, can I run an extension cord out there and hang a drop light in there to do what I need to?
Yeah, 'cause it's not permanent electricity and you're just.
Electricity, so you should be able to do it. And I know that was one of the things that came up before, not looking at putting lights and air conditioners and all that stuff. In them also, there's a couple of places in town where they have two containers, and they've put basically a roof structure between the two, so they can park a vehicle underneath or a tractor underneath or something, they've got the storage, they've got the parts, they've got the equipment. And the way I read it, that would not be allowed.
That's right, that would, you're making it a structure at that point, and it's not engineered.
I don't see that as a structure, I see that as a way for somebody to be able to have his storage right there where he can work on his equipment and stuff.
And maybe our building official could address that.
Yeah, what is it, a hundred and sixty miles an hour or something that it has to?
One-ten.
One-ten?
Yeah, three-second, three-second gusts.
So as long as it's.
At a thirty-pound snow load, which we require, it would require engineering.
Okay. I just. I, I can see that you don't want it blowing off down the road, or you don't want it caving in on somebody with snow load, but is it really something we need to regulate that close?
Um, if it's life, health, safety, then yeah.
Here is a question, if, if a person was to build two storage sheds out of wood, say they're ten by twenty, and they're twenty foot apart, and then they put a roof over it out of wood, what have you got now?
It's all connected, it's all, that square footage is all added up.
That's what I'm saying, see, you almost got a house, you got two, four, six.
Now you need a permit, cause you're on the square footage.
Right, so, I mean, that's what we're creating when they're doing it with the metal containers, too.
But they're getting around that, because the containers themselves are not structures.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is if, if somebody could bring in metal stru- metal containers and put a roof over the top of them, and that's cool, then you built a, say, a seven, eight-hundred square foot storage area. Now, why can't I build one out of wood and do the same thing? And our limits right now are two-hundred square feet, is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
That you need, you know, two-hundred feet or less, you don't need a permit. And maybe, I hate to say this, but maybe, but they make those Conexes ten by twenties, right, which is?
Eight by twenty, eight by forty.
Eight by twenty, thank you, which is a hundred and sixty square feet, so that's technically underneath the.
Requirement for building.
So would that make that one legal, but uh eight by forty, non-legal? You understand my question?
Building code doesn't recognize that it's a structure.
Wow, that's a tough one.
Were you here for the last few meetings on this?
Was I? Yeah, I was, but it, just things you have thoughts of.
I'm, you know, and I understand what Tom's saying, to allow people to do things like that, but by the same token, I've seen several metal sheds, several mayor motels, and that end up in the neighbor's yard up against their house when we get a wind, so I do think it's important that if someone, because I've thought about doing it myself, if someone's gonna build basically a pole barn in between two Conex boxes and have a roof on it, that it should be able to pass code, which means it needs to be engineered, and they need to go inspect what kind of girders they've put in, how many screws they put in the sheet metal, so that this thing stays together.
But now you gotta put the Conex on a permanent, permanent foundation.
No, no, well, I don't think so. If, if you attach it.
I'm not an engineer, but I would think.
No, if.
He's saying build a pole barn in between self, self-supporting.
Yeah.
We're going in the wrong direction, wrong direction.
No, I, I think, I think this is all things that we need to go through to figure out where we wanna go from here.
And this is something that's only gonna take effect about the day you sign it. Anybody that's done it in the past, they're free and clear.
Right, right, I agree with you. And I understand that.
So going forth, we don't want them to do it, but if they've already done it, it's okay. Tough situation.
I would say what we would look, what we would look the other way at are those Conex boxes that are existing today, but if they've created a roof structure over those Conex boxes, then, then those, I mean.
That's a public safety issue.
Right, they're not even allowed to do that now, so we would still go after those.
And either have them reverse engineer it, or whatever they needed to do to make sure it's safe.
Right, they could leave the Conex boxes, but the roof structure would have to go.
Unless they could get engineering.
Or, or reverse engineering.
Right, correct.
I think they look great, but I think they should be engineered for a proper roof. Snow load.
So, so, so really, I think we're, I mean, we've talked about that part of it, but now let's go back, Tom, let's go back to just numbers. You know, the one percent, the three percent, you know, what is um within the UDO, as we discussed it with Josh at several meetings and then brought it to council, that's kinda where we got, was, was this percentage. So do you think that that, where do you think that needs to be? Do you think we need to allow more?
No, I think what we came up with was fine, the, the part of it I don't see is, I don't care whether you paint it to match your house or match the dirt or whatever, and if you want it in the back only where it has to be screened or something, I think we're just regulating, over-regulating what we don't need to. And there's no way you're gonna go back on these people and say, oh, by the way, you need to paint that Conex box.
No.
You're gonna go over here off-road three and tell them, hey, by the way, you need to paint your railroad car. Can't be done.
No, no, the stuff that's existing, you can't.
What, what kinda got me on this the other night, is there were just things worded that didn't make a whole lot of sense to me, or were either added in that weren't part of the conversation. Would you object to just kinda, let's walk our way right through?
Sure.
You know, we're only six pages, and then we can, you know, that we, we have a starting point and an ending point this way. Again, starting with the outdoor storage.
Are you on page seven? What page are you on?
Well, I'm, unfortunately, I'm still from, no, that. Yeah, four-point-nine outdoor storage, yes.
Four-point-nine outdoor storage, okay, got it. That's on page eight of thirteen on ours.
All right, I guess we, metal storage container, is there?
That's, that's where I'm confused, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we have metal storage container, and then it goes outdoor storage, and then it goes to travel trailers.
Right, so two-point-one is uh the section that includes all of our definitions. Metal storage container is not currently a definition in our code, we would be adding in that definition into section two-point-one. Four-point-nine outdoor storage, um we felt that that was the best section existing in our code to accommodate the placement of metal storage containers, also called Conex boxes.
Metal storage container, I, that definition, I don't have an issue with, does anybody else?
No.
So then if we start with the four-point-nine outdoor storage, um the.
The changes related to Conex box start at two. One is already in our code, and it's related to travel trailers, recreational vehicles, and what constitutes habitation.
But we amended it. This would amend it.
No, those were proposed amendments, but that was taken care of when we amended the manufactured home definitions. So all of that in one will go away.
So four-point-nine.
Four-point-nine, A-two. One, one, A through G, those go away.
Already been dealt with.
The. How do, what does anyone think on an allowance for security during construction period? Can you live in an RV on your property while you're building your house?
We currently have that in our code right now.
Yes, it is in there, and it, okay, because I, I've heard both on that.
No, you are allowed to park an RV on your property while your primary structure is under construction. After your primary structure is complete, the RV goes away.
Is there a time factor on that, Joe?
I would have to uh defer to Dan.
Actually, I believe it's one year, wasn't it? Yes, so one year is what's in there.
It's been taking more than one year to build a house, though.
You go to a builder right now, he's gonna tell you it's a year and a half out.
Well, but.
It's a permit.
I don't know, I'd have to check, I don't remember there being a time limitation on it.
I thought there was, I thought there was, too.
All right, I'll double-check that.
Okay. Do you, well, without getting too far, do you think a, a year is sufficient, or did? Cause I know that's already in our code, and it's not.
Every situation's different, I mean, is it from the time the permit's pulled, or from the time the ground is broken, I mean, that's.
Well, what happens, what happens if you pull a permit and you've got a year to build your house and you're not done, you go ask for an extension, correct? So same thing with the RV, you're still living in it.
Well, technically, the RV section is not what we're here to discuss. We're here discussing two.
Okay.
A-two, which is related to Conex boxes, and B, uh.
Well, this is, this is new text here, right? The bold is new text.
Okay, I'm just looking at.
Four-point-nine A.
Right, so we're not agendaized to discuss the RVs, parked trailers, or anything like that, so maybe I, let me hand this out. This has blue for what's, what we can discuss. And then, one more?
I got one, you gave me one earlier, yeah, thank you.
It's just my working copy of the language. So, go down to number two, it's the same text, it's just, what I've handed out is color-coded to help us understand um what we can talk and what we're not addressing.
Well, four-point-nine A is in blue.
Right, four-point-nine A, that single se- uh sentence there, uh because it divides residential uses from commercial. And I had to go through and renumber this entire section, because it, it, the numbering was incorrect in our current code, so in order to renumber it and make it correct, that's blue.
So close to what we had here. Cause when you, in here, when you included this, and subject to the following on your, what I'm reading, what you presented to us the other night, you know, is now different than what this is just in the very first sentence. So, which doesn't mean anything, but it does include what's underneath it, which again, I just wanted to make sure that the allowance for the security.
Right, so anything uh underneath one is not being changed with relation to Conex boxes. The Conex box section starts in two. Goes two, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H. And then, because of the numbering issue, the commercial portion skips down to five, and it goes five, A through J.
If we're not addressing um A-one or F, why are there strike-throughs in the bold marks? Has that not been approved yet? Why is it on, on here, it's changes, that's, I think that might be where our confusion is.
So, those were changes that were gonna be made prior to us addressing the manufactured home definitions, which we changed in March. So our manufactured home definitions changed to address parked trailers, park model trailers, and all of those things to define them as RVs.
So they're no longer needed here, they've already been addressed.
Right, they've already been addressed.
So they're just.
You just X it out.
Yeah.
There lies some confusion.
I apologize.
No worries, glad we got that worked out.
So if you are under one acre, it then depends on how many square foot lot you have under two A.
We come up with that, one percent for residential and three percent for commercial.
Yeah, because we did a square footage.
Right, square footage of your lot, right.
So unless, unless someone has something else under two that they've got uh comments on, it looks like D is where, you know, Tom made the comment of that he didn't, wasn't really in agreeance with the painting, making a person paint him.
But they wish.
I, I take issue with B also.
Yeah, B also, please, a land use permit.
A land use permit is required, so that we can go out and make sure that they've met the setbacks. They are modifying their property.
And you think that's, that's overstepping as far as a permit there?
Yeah.
I, I do, too, I'm inclined to think.
So then you deal with that on a complaint-driven from the neighbor, or if it's just blatantly seen by one of our code enforcement officers, and then people just have to do it over?
So there is, there is a, a side setback or a setback, but we're just not gonna worry about permitting it. But if, if there is a complaint, they come out, well, then they need to move it then.
And if a person comes in to our lobby and says, what do I need to do to set a container, they can be told that, or we can have a piece of paper that shows.
So, number one, land use permits don't cost anything, it's just so that we can put something in our computer system to make sure that we have we have notification that we can go out and check the setbacks, and I personally would rather make sure we check the setbacks when they put it down, instead of waiting for a complaint to come in, and then they have to move the entire thing.
And if it's at no cost, I certainly agree with that.
Anything.
Yeah, but you need to send out a, somebody to check the setbacks on it.
Well, that, that's what we do anyway.
Why don't you just give the customer the setbacks to do it, and if they don't do it, give them the complaint and then have them move it afterwards?
Well, we already check setbacks on everything, so if you, if you put a shed there, we're gonna check the setbacks, because you need a land use permit, whether you need a building permit or not, you're getting a land use permit, land use permit doesn't cost anything. It's for us, our record-keeping, to make sure that we have, we track it, so we can go out and check. So we're, we're checking setbacks on everything anyway.
And do you think every person in Chino Valley's gonna do what they're told?
Corey didn't.
No, but then we go back to our uh enforcement officer, you get three strikes.
So then he has to go and check it, so somebody's.
Well, if, if the neighbor complains, right?
So here's the question. What's gonna cost more, uh, staff time or, or whatnot? Uh, going out and verifying the setbacks while they place it? Or are code enforcement sending out a fifteen day notification, sending out a second fifteen day notification, sending out a citation, taking through the process for them to come into compliance? I, I guess the resources are gonna be spent one way or the other.
But you know what it's gonna cost the customer to move it? Ten feet for the setbacks? A lot of money.
So why don't we make sure they put it in the right place at the right time when they put it down? What?
How long does it take to get a land use permit?
You come in, you apply for it and, and you get issued the land use permit. We put it in our computer and you tell us when we need to be out there to check the setbacks.
Is that over the counter?
Yeah.
Same day. I think that, where I get hung up on Tom is I need a permit to do something on my property. That, that, that's not right. You know, and the, and the idea of big government. So the whole land use permit, I understand the context, but the, um, I guess the feeling behind it is, I don't need a stinking permit. This is my property. I, why am I gonna come to you for a permit? I understand the logic and the reasoning of it.
But it also opens up an avenue of education so they can be handed a piece of paper saying what you can and can't do.
That's right, and it also provides us a record of who's come in and gotten a perm, of the land use permit for the Conex box and it helps us kinda keep track of that.
You still don't like it, Tom?
Still sounds like an overregulation to me. I mean, I go along with it, but a land use permit, you know, people come in and says, I'm gonna put a Conex box, box on my property. Okay, stay ten foot off your fence. Okay, I'm done.
But the fence isn't always your property line.
So then we're back to y'all having to go out and maintain and figure out exactly from what line they have to go ten foot or five foot or twenty foot or whatever you come up with.
That's part of our job.
And while we're on this topic, the item C, the last line on that metal storage container shall meet the minimum setbacks for permanent structures instead of the setbacks for accessory structures. What's the difference between accessories, structure setback, and permanent structure?
Permanent is like primary structure of your home. So we would, uh, for instance, some, um, some zoning, uh, districts require a ten foot setback for your primary structure from the rear yard property line. Uh, ten feet or fifteen feet from the side, depending on which side you're on, and twenty feet from the front. So if it's required to be in the rear yard, then it would need to be ten feet off of the rear yard property line. If we use the accessory structure setback, it's five feet.
An accessory structure, give an example of what that is.
An accessory structure would be like your barn or a shed, um, an actual structure. These aren't structures.
And, and, and that came up the last time we talked about this, Cory. You remember, and, and I brought up, I would like to see them with, with, I would like to see it the same as a building because just like you talked about the expense, they're heavy. You gotta bring a crane out or something like that. So once somebody sets one of those things, it's, it's pretty much permanent. So that's where that came from.
I'd like to see them closer, if it could be, just because it would keep junk from winding up between the shed and the fence and the weeds, you, you know.
But if you go with C, it says metal storage containers shall be required to meet the minimum setbacks for permanent structures instead of using the accessory structure setback. But our graph two up here says the installation or placement of a metal storage container is allowed as an accessory use. I think we're confusing people right there.
That's.
Well, it's an accessory use because it's not your primary structure. So you have your primary structure and your primary use on the property. In this case, it would be, uh, if we're talking residential, your primary use would be a single family residence. The primary structure would be the home. So an accessory structure or an accessory use is anything other than the primary use. So the placement of, uh, you're not using the, uh, Conex box as a permanent primary structure. It is accessory to the property. So while it is accessory to the property based on comments that we received, we would measure the setback from the primary structure setbacks.
So what if we just use, what if we just, what if we just leave the accessory part of that sentence off? It's gonna be, it's gonna be ten foot, period. Not instead of accessory.
Primary structure setbacks, period.
That way, there's.
I like that a lot better. Does that work, Tom?
Yeah, makes the confusion out of it for me anyway.
That, that was for.
Yay, town council working together.
What about D?
Uh, I just circled the word encouraged. Encouraged is, that's.
This is under D?
Yeah, instead of shall be painted.
It is encouraged that the metal storage container color be painted.
So.
Well, e- either it is or it isn't.
So do you want me to change that to shall?
No.
No?
It is shall.
Is it? Because what if my house is purple? Do you want my Conex boxes to be purple?
There's a lot of sheds that aren't even painted to the, match the primary house. So how can you make them?
Oh, the color. We're not asking them to paint it to the primary structure's color. It's encouraged that they go to the primary structure's color, but we're not, we're not forcing them. They do have to paint them though, cause I don't know if, a lot of those Conex boxes, they have graffiti, they've got business names on them, they've got other stuff. Besides just a.
Yeah, so that's the question.
So yeah, it is encouraged.
If you don't have them painted.
So the painted, we, the painted is a shall. All containers shall be painted and maintained to a single color. That's mandated.
Don't they all come painted, one way or another?
What's that?
Don't they all come painted? They're all one, they're all, they're different colors, but they're.
But they're not all a single color. This is a single color.
It's got advertising and graffiti on it. I can see it.
So we're just not mandating the specific color. We're mandating that it be painted, but.
So if it comes, even though the, the paint may not be perfect, if it comes a solid color with no graffiti and no name on it, then they don't have to do anything to it.
Based on this language, then no. As long as it's a solid, single color and there's no advertising, no graffiti, nothing, then it meets the intent of this code.
Once there's advertising, it's two colors.
It just needs to be a single color.
So they could paint over the advertising, match the color. I mean, you know, it, it can be some.
As long as it's not a rental unit where it's got mobile unit, whatever, his phone number up on there and stuff.
You want that removed?
From right where it is encouraged, you know, that, that's, means nothing. It's not a requirement.
No, it's not a requirement, but it does show that the town would prefer it to be the color of the main structure or an earth tone.
What if my house is?
But we're not requiring it.
I like purple, so.
Okay, what if my house is orange?
So it, we're not gonna, we're, we're, we're not going to enforce it, so I guess it doesn't need to be there.
I can, I, I can delete it. I, it doesn't matter to me.
I am a hundred percent in support of it being painted earth tones, but I'm not gonna ever. We can't ask that people to do that, and most of them come that way anyways. Tan, green, brown.
Okay, so are we over to five A now?
Um, two B, um.
Well, there's two E, F, G, and H left.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I went through those. I was happy with that.
Okay, uh, on two G. I, I have a note. When would this apply? This might be a frank question.
Uh, it is definitely a frank question.
Can we drift back to two E first?
Two E?
Yeah, the physical modifications. You can't do that. How about if I wanted to put a wind turbine, cause I don't want my stuff in storage to be all.
Then you need to engineer it. Turn it into a structure.
You put an electric to it regardless of what kind of electric it is.
Any modification to that, it, it, you're, you're trying to turn it into a structure, but you're not going through the proper process. So you would need to get an engineer to sign off on it.
It says, any modifications of storage containers to turn them into something other than a storage container. That's all I'm doing. I'm just flying to some open air. It's like leaving the door.
But you're cutting into the, the container. So. You had a question about F?
I think F could use some clarity, only because, no, it ma- we, physically you cannot run power to it, but yes, you can use an extension cord. Is, is there a way to define that better?
I don't think so.
Well, in electrical service, that's, you're coming in to run power to something. You're getting an electrical permit.
What if you put permanent in front of that?
I'd have to ask the building official, um, if he has any thoughts on how to. Permanent electrical service?
Got a question. Would that imply that someone would think temporary service installed in it would be okay?
We already, we already established it would be. You can drop, you can bring a drop cord light in there. That's temporary.
But they may think, they may think something actually mounted in it would be temporary.
I, I would say no electrical service shall be attached, shall be constructed, shall be served to the building without engineering. That still opens it up for an extension cord. If someone wants to use a drop light.
Leave it as is.
Okay, good.
Working together.
Without permit.
Where are you at? Oh, you're looking at that one. You're at G now with the drainage. What was your issue there?
Okay, uh, when would that apply on G?
That it needs to be attached or strapped down?
Right, that, that dovetails into our flood prevention ordinance. So in areas of special flood hazard, the sheet flow or flood plains. Uh, there's some comments in that code that talks about outdoor storage being anchored so that it wouldn't float away in time of a flood. So that's a reference to that.
How are they gonna know if they don't get a permit?
Well, if they get a land use permit, we'll do a flood hazard, uh, study or assessment to determine if it's in an area flooding with, with that land.
So if that were just part of the that, part of your inspection when you go out.
I think that's what they're saying. I think that's what they're, he's saying is that would be part of that no cost inspection if they see something that's a problem.
Yeah.
Of course, then that wouldn't be, it'd be a little late if they were setting it. So how do we deal with that? It's like you said, it's an over the counter permit. They get it, they tell you when they're gonna set it so we can send somebody out. So if they go out there and they put in their cinder blocks and they're, they got a crane set and they're ready to set it and you go out there and go, oh, wait a minute, you got a river running under this, this thing. You can't do it.
Well, typically when they, sorry, typically when they come into our, our office and ask questions, they have a specific property in question. We have access to the FEMA flood maps. We have access to a study that was conducted that shows the sheet flow. All of those things can be conducted at the counter.
But what's engineer to tie those down?
Again.
How would you tie those down?
Uh, same way you would tie down outdoor storage that's in the same situation.
And it's, but it's not a permanent structure.
Neither is outdoor storage.
I can't remember if outdoor storage is being tied down or a requirement for it.
It's in, uh, section, I can pull it.
Put it there, you're gonna put pontoons on the bottom of your Conex box so it can float over your property line.
No, you gotta tie it down so it can't.
I believe it's section one fifty one of the code. It'll take me a little bit to get to it.
I think my barn will float away long before a storage container will.
I got a question on.
I don't think anything's flowing away in Chino right now.
Oh, we're not on it yet.
Blowing away. How about blowing away? Blowing away.
Wind driven current, take the whole thing.
All right, you know, I don't know how, how, how often they, how often do storage containers float away?
As often as the flood waters are tall enough to carry them away when they're in the flood plain.
They are floaters. Um, what if you just took off the last sentence or it left the first part of the sentence? That way, the town engineer may require anchoring of the metal storage container. I, I don't know where. You just keep the container out of a flood, out of the flood plain?
Well.
On the placement originally.
That's the reason we said didn't want to is cause section one fifty two point oh four six, section B says storage of other materials or equipment may be allowed if not subject to major damage by floods and a firmly anchored to prevent flotation or if readily removable from the area within the time available after flood warning. So I figured these wouldn't be readily movable, but if they're firmly anchored, we wouldn't be over regulating.
What's firmly anchored?
Exactly, that's where I'm.
What, what, do you have to put it tie down or do you have to put cinder blocks down to it?
Firmly anchored to prevent.
Do you have a spec for that?
I can, if you wanna regulate that much, I can do that.
No, we're just asking, we're asking why, if the public sees this, what, okay, so I have them, what do I need to do to anchor them?
It would be on a case by case basis. So you could imagine use a, a helical ground anchor would be one example. I imagine they, they tie down mobile homes much the same way, or manufactured homes, sorry, much the same way, right?
I don't think they allow them in the flood plain anywhere.
Sure they do.
There's a lot to consider, but this is a.
Right, but it could cause damage on someone else's property if it floats off of your property. That's the.
What I'm asking is what, what options are you gonna give?
Typically, they, they would come in with the options and we would review those. We wouldn't wanna restrict their options.
So I think what Frank's saying is they would have to get their own engineering and bring it in for us to approve.
Right, and I wouldn't even necessarily require a stamped engineer for this. I don't know that it rises to that level, but we could work on a case by case basis to determine what would be appropriate.
I mean, on a flood with that, uh, with the manufacturing, you can go down ten feet, six, six feet wide of the stem wall. To, you know, so what if you put the Conex box on the same property and you put a simple tie down? Is that gonna be enough? Just too many requirements.
I got a question.
And then is it be?
Okay, but if you're the downstream neighbor with the house and the Conex box floats into the house, they're gonna ask the town why they permitted that Conex box to be put in a flood plain.
Right, but what if you, what if you had to tie down this stuff?
But at least it was tied down. It needs to be firmly anchored.
But does that make it a permanent structure?
I, it, I like the idea of it being there because that gives the, that gives the person thinking about putting a Conex box, it makes the red light go off hopefully.
It's their responsibility.
You know, maybe that's not a good place for it because I might have to anchor it. Maybe I move it over here instead.
Doesn't the first sentence do the second sentence?
Well, it's subject to drainage and building safety requirements.
Well, if it's required that you anchor it, then you're anchored.
Yeah, we could delete the second sentence.
Okay.
That's what I saw. And then that would take all this up.
And then everything in section one fifty two would apply.
Okay, whatever one fifty two is.
So do you want me to reference section one fifty two?
I don't know what it is, so I can't tell you that.
It's the flood prevention section of the town code.
No, we can't be talking about that, Josh. That's another area.
It's not agen- uh, on the agenda.
We can talk about referencing sections to make this easier for future.
Section is before I would tell you, yes, go ahead and put it in there. So that would take a lot of discussion. I have a question about the last H.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So H, uh, the way we have it written is Conex boxes that are gonna be used for storage or whatnot are to be placed in the rear yard. So H, uh, the way we have it written is conex boxes that are gonna be used for storage or whatnot are to be placed in the rear yard, uh, with a setback. Uh, H would allow, let's say you're constructing your home, but you need to store, uh, materials, you need to store equipment, uh, for that construction. We could then permit that conex box in conjunction with your building permit in the front yard.
But you wouldn't be permitting it, would you, because it's not a structure?
No, you would already have a building permit for the construction of whatever it is you're building and you need to store stuff. We would allow that conex box to be stored in the front yard during construction.
With the house building permit.
House, commercial, industrial, whatever it is, yeah. But then.
That's, that's good.
But then that conex box would have to be removed out of the front yard. Before the CFO, yeah.
So is the commercial all the same?
Uh, the commercial language is, uh, fairly similar, it's, it's nearly the same, yeah.
So if we make the same changes to.
We're not there.
Dinner's waiting, the baby's hungry.
Right after H, we start B. And commercial manufacturing and industrial zoning, do we actually have a manufacturing zoning? Classification?
Uh, there's no manufacturing zoning classification, but commercial heavy allows for light manufacturing and industrial zoning allows for, uh. The remaining types of manufacturing.
So it could just be commercial and industrial zoning districts?
Yeah, we could do that.
Is that agenda ice?
What, uh, what number are you, or whatever?
B, B.
Are we sure it's on the agenda?
I don't think we can talk about that code.
Yeah, because it, it, it already has a.
No, it's not blue, or it's not about storage containers.
Yeah, it was, it was changed.
Tell this, Aaron.
Uh, yeah, B, B did not change at all, the actual B didn't change.
Oh, just how you lettered it.
Yeah, I had to renumber everything because the way it was numbered in our code was. It just, it didn't flow, so I changed it for clarity's sake. So the commercial stuff starts at B five.
Bingo.
Yeah, right.
Five B. Five B, right?
Uh, B five. And then five has also the subletters A through J.
B five?
Okay, okay, okay.
Gotcha.
So if we make the change, same changes here, we should be. Pretty much in.
I can go through and make the same changes, yeah.
Unless somebody would see something different.
Okay, so we're on. We're on five, right?
Yeah, last page.
Yep.
It's last page each one right here.
Unfortunately, I wrote my notes. On the existing, but, uh, five A. Place one of any metal storage container requires site plan and site plan review and approval?
Yeah.
That sounds like a little much to me. Why can't that just be a, a simple?
Cause our current code reads that any external site changes require site plan review, and it doesn't differentiate between what external site. So it could mean an increase in parking, it could mean an increase in building, uh, floor area, it could mean. Anything that you're changing to the external site of your property. And that's current code, requires site plan review.
Well, we don't have metal containers in our code right now, so.
So we haven't been allowing that, they, they'd have to do it now anyway. If they went through the conditional use permit process that we have required for conex boxes. Um, they would still have to.
My property's completely done and, and I need some more storage. I need to go through the whole site plan review to, to add a container onto my commercial property.
You're changing the external side of your property, yeah.
Okay, so could we go in, could we go in and amend that in our code to say, with the exception of conex boxes? Is that realistic, or do you see in it, would you see a problem with that?
I mean, we, we can, we could do that if you want.
Well.
I'd rather change it when we get to that section, I mean, there's a lot we gotta change.
Okay, I'm, I was just asking how that works, so.
How long a process is, if Cory wanted to put one on his property right now, how long a process would that be to go through a site plan review and all that?
As long as you submit to us, I, um, a site plan, which does not have to be an engineered document, it just has to be drawn to scale. So if you submit to us a drawing on graph paper that is to scale where you wanna put that conex box. We would accept that as your site plan's mittel, and we would, we would go through the process of review.
Okay, where, then I want that spelled out. If that, if it shouldn't be just a minor, you know, one paper, then spell it out because who knows, gonna have your job when you're gone.
But that's already in our code.
No, we, we don't have metal storage containers in our code, that's why we're here.
I understand, so that part.
You don't understand. This is container, we're talking about containers.
That's, that's correct, but, but you were talking about site plan review, so site plan review is clearly defined in our code in section one point nine.
You just tied site plan review to a container.
Site plan review is tied to any external change on any commercial or industrial property.
I don't find a storage, a metal storage container a.
You're adding it to your site.
A site plan change. So. It's just an accessory with, you know. Accessory whatever building, my building.
If you use the building.
Accessory use.
Could I maybe, um, go over some cases of where maybe it would be good to review it is, say the. They wanna put the container in the detention pond or over the septic system, um, would council want that reviewed?
No, you come in for the, the simple, simple complimentary. Review that you're, you're not setting it on the property line, you got your setback right, period.
The land use permit, does that apply to commercial?
Um, yeah, I would imagine it does, yeah.
Okay, okay, so then I withdraw the question.
Land use permit, why do we have to get site plan review?
Well, the land use permit just makes sure that for residential that you meet setbacks, uh, the land use permit for commercial is pretty much the same thing, but. There's not a lot of people, when they come in, if they're just doing a change of use internal, let's just say you have, uh, a medical office. And that medical office is now going to a real estate agent, well, you have the parking requirement. So, because you're not increasing the amount of parking, you're not making any external changes to your structure, it's just a strict change of use. So, we're not gonna review anything. Um, if they have to do anything on the site, whether it's construct a trash enclosure or whatnot, then they're coming through site plan review because they're making external changes to the site. So the moment you start making external changes to the site, which is not defined, so it's anything you do to the external site. You're coming through site plan review. It doesn't matter if it's a metal storage container, it doesn't matter if you're building a trash enclosure, if you're increasing the amount of parking on the site, so if you reverse that and you. You're doing a, a change of use, but you're not changing the building, uh, but you're going from regular office to medical office, well, you've doubled the amount of parking that your use needs, so. You will be coming through site plan review to accommodate, to account for the, the additional parking that you need. And that additional parking, you're looking at paving and. Uh, the landscaping requirement related to that and things like that, so.
So with this, this A, where it says requires site plan review. We could, there's another section we could go to look at that would say, it's like, plan review is as simple as what you said it was.
Yeah, we could, we could delete A completely, but it's not gonna change the fact that if people want to in commercial and industrial.
I, I understand if it has to be done, that, that's a code, then that's a code, but I'm just saying, just. To kinda help Cory with his answer is, there's another section that says what the site plan review would be, as simple as putting it on a piece of scaled paper where it's gonna go.
Yeah, so, uh, in section one point nine, in site plan review, there's a list of requirements that have to be on that site plan, and. It doesn't say anywhere in there that it's required to be engineered, so if you submit to me a piece of graph paper for your site and it is to scale. Because that's the only requirement in our code is that it has to be drawn to scale. Uh, we, we've accepted graph paper drawn site plans in the past.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
No, I, I would like just a land use permit just like residential, cause you're not changing your external use.
Well, that would require changing a completely different section of the code.
I don't know why.
Cause you're making an exterior change to the site, you're adding something to your site.
You're ex, you're adding something to your, your property, uh, residentially. What's the difference?
It isn't coded that way, the commercial code says different, the commercial code says anything exterior you have to do site plan, so we would need to go replace, we'd need to go fix that.
I just know I've been through the site plan review enough times that I think this is just extremely, you know, overreaching, but.
So Josh, if there's a site plan review and it's into scale, drawn up to scale, submitted in, there's no inspections?
Uh, what do you mean by no inspections, I mean, we'll still.
They just inspect the setbacks and the.
One, once we approve your site plan, then you are ready to go, so if you're gonna put your. Conex boxes down after going through site plan review, we would come out and make sure that you meet the setbacks just as we would, uh, the, the land use permit.
So all they would be checking is a setback. And drainage, and drainage.
And setbacks and drainage, for, yeah, for a conex box.
What's the specifications?
We don't know that.
Did you say, well, we, we brought.
You might be able to change it to a tree.
I'll just have everyone hire an engineer for the drainage, we'll take care of it that way.
Can we take five minutes?
Hire an engineer.
Can we take five minutes?
If, if that's the solution we need to.
Yes.
Just to take a breather?
Yes.
And walk away from the table? Just take a breather?
You're messing. That was.
I mean. I mean, can you, can you change it to a tree?
I, I just don't have the ability to answer every hypothetical question.
Sure, oh yeah, it could be anything.
About anchoring.
Yeah, but I mean, you gotta, do you have a thirty percent grade? Do you have a splat, would you have a splat, a flat spot?
Well, I, that's, you keep pushing me for a specification and I can't specify every situation, so the default would be.
Why, you push me because you need answers, I mean, when you put something on paper?
The answer is, you, you hire, you have a town engineer that is paid to look at these things and review them.
So we're gonna leave it up to the engineer to tell us what, what we need to tie down?
To review what you're proposing to tie down. I understand that you're not satisfied with that answer, but.
Well.
To have an answer that satisfies every case to put in the code is not feasible when you're looking at differing site conditions. I don't know that there's, the, the simple answer would be to not allow them in the flood plain.
The one shot fix would be, don't put it in the flood plain.
But.
Well, that, that might be the answer.
Right, but then you would be.
But if you move it out of the flood plain and it violates the setback, then you can't do it anyways.
Hey, 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 uh-uh. Hey, hey, uh-uh. We're staying, you're staying.
The only reason we were.
Whatever.
Yeah, the only reason we were trying to.
My puppy misses me too.
Outdoor storage is allowed in those areas, so we were trying to treat it like outdoor storage, but if it. If council's not satisfied with that, we can just.
I, I don't have an issue with it, but. But I've seen a, but, but back in the mid seventies, I saw a mobile home floating down the wash west of town.
Oh, I'll take it.
The one that goes off, off the flat part there, down, down to the north, I mean, I literally saw a mobile home floating down the wash, I mean, it was seven foot deep. And it was gone, gone its way.
I saw that on, I saw that on River Creek Road.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I saw it at Phoenix, well, New River.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Yeah, and then you always get, then you always get the, well, I didn't think any water ever ran in this.
Why didn't you tell me?
How, how do you? How do you think that ditch got there?
Well, it's kinda like.
One of them, they're ready, it's just random ready whip.
But then they, then you.
Yeah, that, that'll be one we need to review.
Thank you.
Yes, cause the one swine is definitely, pretty common, I think.
Well, but I think that that's the, it, it's. I think all of us know that this is nothing but a liability situation. So, you put it there, if it's not needed, it doesn't happen. And in most cases, it's not gonna be needed, but at least it's there, so if it. If somebody isn't using common sense and decides they wanna put their conex box. Where it's not gonna be stable and it could end up in their neighbor's yard, then Frank can say, eh, I don't think that's a good idea, if you really want it there, you're gonna have to do this.
Okay, are, are you glad we took a five minute break that we didn't take?
We were supposed to take a five minute break.
I didn't ask for a five minute break.
She did.
Yeah, well, she got one.
Thank you, thank you. Had to say I was not gonna be able to get my sense of practice. Is there a cost for site plan review?
Uh, site plan review is one hundred dollars.
So this. Mine to my tongue.
So. If you wanna, if you wanna make this like residential, then we need to go back and change the code in commercial, correct?
The site, yeah, section one point.
So that's the, that's the option, so what do we wanna, you know, what do you want, you know, how do, how do we wanna do it?
To come up with an exemption, maybe just for storage containers?
I don't know that, that's, that's where Josh comes back in, he's gonna be able to tell you what needs to be done to do that, right?
Uh, we would have to change the, uh, there are a couple exemptions to site plan review, this is not one of those, um, so. You would have to add in an exemption statement, um, in that list of exemptions to site plan review for conex boxes, uh, by doing that though, um. Well.
I would just put it, if, if anything, put it in there just like the other, and that is, you're gonna meet the same setback requirements as the. Is the primary structure. And call it good. I just think you're getting way too much in people's, people's business and you're requiring to make more expense and. I, I don't see any, any particular reason for it.
I can understand that for residential, but commercial, our main commercial core is the gateway into our community, every single person that drives through the town. Drives through our entire commercial core. And so if we are allowing people to place these conex boxes, uh, on their commercial properties. Basically anywhere without the screening and the buffering and the landscaping and whatever else. You know, that's, that's what people are gonna see when they drive through our community, so.
Well, then let, let's, let's cover that in C, and to me, A is just. Ridiculous.
I'm actually okay with the slight, with the site plan review.
As long as it's a, the modified site plan review or a total site plan review?
On a eight and a half by eleven graph paper?
Then, then I would want, I wanna see that in there.
Absolutely, it's, it has to be written in here and with it, if that's gonna be the conditions, if that's what is acceptable, it needs to be written in here.
So instead of adding new language here, can I just reference where it's stated in our current code now?
No, because when someone's looking up, what do I need to do to put on a, a. To put a, uh, conex box on my property, I just need it all be together.
But it's common practice to reference.
Okay, you asked me a question, I gave you an answer, that's what I think.
Okay.
Yeah, the reason why I, I would like to see it in there is because a lot of the issues we've been having in the past few years. Is, well, it's in this part of the code, but wait, it's in this part of the code, but no, you have to look here for this part of the code, so if we put this. If we're making it, requiring a site plan review for commercial properties, it should say what would be accepted for the application. In detail, in writing, right then and there, so they don't have to reference code and go back and forth and try and interpret it, which is where we've had a lot of issues with development. In the past couple of years, we can make it as clean as copy, put in add. in the past couple of years. We can make it as clean as copy, put in add two sentences.
So something in parentheses underneath, a two scale, a one page two scale drawing is sufficient for making this application?
Put it right in there. Referen, I mean, you can s- see reference, but put the actual verbiage in there, so when they read it, they're like, okay, this is where it is. And there's not the going back and forth and then getting everyone upset and then legal involved and no one knows what the actual code is because it's referenced in different places. That's my thought process.
Okay.
Okay, are we done with A? On to B?
I think so.
B's pretty cut and dry what we said.
I think so.
C? I'm sorry, what?
I'm good with B.
Okay, how about C?
Good with C.
D? That's the same as in the other one, right?
It's a little bit different.
Read that out loud. All metal storage containers shall be placed at the rear of the business and shall meet the property development standards of the respective zoning districts. Those metal storage containers that cannot be placed to the rear of the building shall be fully screened with both landscaping and fencing. Metal storage containers shall meet the minimum setbacks for permanent structures instead of the setbacks for accessory structures.
So we're gonna take off the second half of that sentence like we did in the beginning, right? Yeah. Hey, Annie, were you reading up the?
Yeah, cause what you read is not what we're looking at here.
What are you looking at? There was a little bit of difference.
I'm reading what we were presented with the packet.
Oh, I was just trying to follow along.
The slight wording difference between what Josh handed out and that.
Where is the word period? What was provided in the packet is what we should be discussing. Differences that was not provided to the public. Okay, so this is done for me. You can have that back, thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Um, so what, what do we discuss there? Are we on D?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't like the, you're telling me where I can and can't on my own property. You know, we already covered the eighty-nine A or the eighty-nine properties, which are to me, I, I agree with Josh, they're right there in public view. But once you're off in a commercial industrial area, you know, don't tell me I can't put my container up front. It's, it's commercial.
It says that you can put it up front.
Shall be placed at the rear of the business and shall meet the property development standards of, of the respective zoning districts.
Period. Those metal storage containers that cannot be placed to the rear of the building shall be fully screened with both landscaping and fencing.
So you can put them up front as long as you're screened then?
Yes.
Yeah, make them purty.
Okay, okay.
What kind of screening? That's like, keep flies out.
So the current screening requirements of our code would allow for chain link with either slats or the tarpaulin mesh. Um, or any combination of some screening fence or landscaping. Um, it's just so you can't see it.
The height of the building?
Uh, no, six feet in height.
And that's in the code? Okay, we're good?
Yep.
How about E? All metal storage containers should be painted a single color. This is the same thing we did with the other one. So we do the same changes?
Just delete that last sentence?
Yes, sir. F, physical modification more is prohibited, same as the house one, correct? Or the residential, the house one, excuse me, the residential ones. Any more on F?
Nope.
No. Okay, how about G? That's the same as the other one. I, placement of the metal storage container subject to drainage and building requirements, period slash, right? So we did last time? What's that, buddy?
So we're on the, the anchoring, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, that's, that's, it's gonna still have to be, the building, drainage and building safety requirements. Cause anchoring is a
Yep.
Is a, gonna be a headache with, there's no set answer. It could depend on where it is.
Right, but it'll need building and building safety required.
Right. And that may require an anchoring, which may, may have to, either you engineer or they engineer or whatever, we'll figure that out.
Well, they, they would.
Right, okay, then they will engineer.
But when, it's not there, so it doesn't matter.
Right. J, if a property owner or occupant requests placement of metal storage container matter not addressed in these rec- requirements. Then zoning minister may require a supplemental of conditional use permit, which we talked about before. No problems with that, anybody? H, temporary uses, that's the same with the building permit if you got a building permit.
The lettering is off there, so I will, I will fix that lettering.
It is, huh? G.
Yep.
I, J, H. And then sunset provision. The provision of this section four point nine related to outdoor storage shall be of no force and effect after April twenty-third, twenty-three unless after meeting all. Thank you, I kept my eye out on my glasses. Public notices and hearing requirements. The town council determines these provisions should remain in effect as currently written or may be amended. Any issues with that?
So this is just gonna be reviewed in twenty twenty-three?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we're still going through the technical review process for commercials, is that? Is there an answer on that?
Technical review process, it's, it's site plan review.
Site plan review, my apologies.
Now, um, is there a way to adjust the, the fees for that?
That would take uh, council action to amend our fee schedule.
You guys think a hundred bucks is too much or not enough or?
You know, you know what I think.
Yes, I do. No comments?
I'm just afraid that's not applicable to Conex boxes, therefore we can't be discussing that.
But it is, isn't it? It's the fee for the Conex box.
Not completely just for Conex boxes, is it?
I don't know.
You are fine to discuss that because it's part of the permit processing that they would have to go.
So how do we feel? Are we good with a hundred dollars? Lonnie is apparently, no, yes, maybe?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Eric? I'm not taking a vote here, I'm just asking opinions, okay? Eric's thinking, what do you think, Tom? Box on your own property, commercial property, no. We think it should be less or free? I think it should be free, make it a property.
I'm in with her.
Okay, oh, you guys don't get a say. Annie?
I don't think there should be a cost for it.
No? Cory, you think no? And I'm kinda leaning the same way. If one's free, why wouldn't the other one be free? Is it a big deal to do the site plan review? Is there a reason why it's a hundred dollars? I mean, come.
It, that's the, the amount set by council.
I understand, I'm just asking if, is, is it a lot of work to do it or is it just a simple?
In this case, it'd be a simple review. Um, normal site plan reviews are a lot of work. Uh, we're reviewing a lot of things.
I understand, but we're just talking about this.
Yeah, so it, it wouldn't be a lot of work. Uh, if you wanna amend the fee schedule in that one area right now, um, we can do that. Uh, moving forward, this is gonna have to go through planning commission again, uh, because it was tabled indefinitely and not to a date certain. So we're, we'll have to start the process again.
Okay.
And I believe that the fee schedule gets adjusted with the new budgets. So that's when that would probably come around. I'll check with that with our finance director.
Okay, cool. Anything else on storage containers? Nothing else on code enforcement? And we're gonna stand adjourned and get out of here.
Okay.
What's that?
Second.
Oh.
Thank you.